Item one, call the meeting order and record the members present to ask.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Ellis.
Here. Can I get a pencil? Never mind.
Item two, read the open meeting compliance statement.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alva Independence School District, number one of West County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December 15th of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of West County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least 24 hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view for the attention of the meeting. Witness my hand is fourth day of April, 2016.
Item three, consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of discussion, consideration, and approval of the following items. Three A, addition of items of new business.
Have now.
Three B, the minutes of the March 7th regular board meeting. Three C, approval of the treasury report on the status of funds and investments. Three D, approval of activity fund report. Three E, approval of activity account fundraisers, attachment A, and three F, approval of the inter-account transfers.
So if we want to go to treasurer's report, there's no additions or corrections to last month's meeting? In a minute. So you've got that in front of you and again, we're in good standing right now. We've got $8,965,828.89 left in our account for the remainder of the year. The new sheet, we can't get on the email, but there's your report. And again, of course, we're always concerned with gross production because it fluctuates pretty much, but we've already encumbered 73% promise to us. And last month, we had over $200,000 gross production, so good shape there. So our fund total, we've collected about 94% and it looks like that we'll have that $15 million and looking at a pretty hefty carryover at this point in time. And the financial activities for senior achievement, you can see that. We have a monthly balance of $576,300. So our senior achievement and all those are in good shape at this point in time. Do you have any questions? Activity funds in good shape. This, probably the biggest expense that we had this month is we did have a donation of about $48,000 for new lockers for the new dressing facility and that was donated. And so we get all of those. And then the other in the activity account, child nutrition reimbursed at $12,000 there. Rest had pretty normal expenditures on that.
Can we ask a question?
Sure.
On that lockers that they provided for the new facility, are we going to take care of them a little better than they have the wooden ones that they put in and?
Larry, I hope so. You know, I think there's a lot of pride in our school at this point in time. I think there's a lot of pride out at the baseball park of all the things that we've done and the improvement out there. And I also think the softball. So when that all gets completed and everything, I think that's going to be a pride factor and I think that will definitely take care of a lot of problems out there. And also, the way it is built, it's going to be easier for those coaches to maintain and to supervise a lot better because it's a little bit open more and their office is going to be right there where the dressing rooms are compared to where they are now, completely, you know, across that old weight room, you know where that's at. So yes, I anticipate that to happen. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
And then you have a report on your activity fundraisers, attachment A. Our summer baseball is going to change a little bit. In the past, we've had American Legion, we've also had the Renegades and so forth. And because of the inconsistency around the state, the high school coaches got together and we're going to have high school baseball program in the summer, just like what we do in the summer league basketball, also when we go on 7-on-7 and football. High school students will be on a high school team, eight to 11 this summer, only out of high school and in the middle school. And it will be a fundraiser and it will cost $275. And then all the expenses will be paid out of that, it will be generated or it will go through our activity account and it will be paid through the activity account and then the coaching salaries will come out of the net profit of that as of the extra duty that we set up a year ago. So they're going to have the summer baseball program and also they'll have a summer camp for kids that they're requesting. And this is going to be a good incentive for our coaches in the future. It's basically, pretty much what Frontier came in and stole Eric Smith because of the money that he can raise during the summer of offering those types of things and being compensated for. And we set this up in the extra duty pay scale last year to take care of these things. So I think it's really going to benefit our kids and our program and see a lot of good things happen from this.
On this pro, on this sheet, sheet right here, is this included in what you're talking about right now?
Yes, yes.
Is there a fund or do you have people who will help with this player fee if kids cannot do this?
We've got enough people that we can call to take care of that in a minute.
Okay, because they're...
We're not going to, we're not going to disclose or let anybody not be involved in because of money.
Now, you say you're comparing this to the summer basketball and 7-on-7. Does that apply to that as well? I don't remember playing.
It will because of the way we changed things of how that will be paid as a camp and then all the camp expenses will go out of that and then the net profits the coaches will receive. So it's pretty much based on the Frontier program, $125 a team or a person over there and then the coaches get that. And we set that up last year to help the coaches.
Well, I have another question.
Okay.
How, how's it going to work when a kid is involved in football, then he goes out for basketball and let's say he plays baseball? What, he's got three things he's got to select.
He's going to be busy, coach, because they're going to have work together trying to get their schedule so that they can do all three things.
I'm glad I'm not playing.
It's tough and you're right because our athletic programs are year-round to a certain extent. Back in the old day, we'd play baseball in the summer. We didn't play football until two weeks before school started. And then we went into basketball after football. And then after football, then you were in a spring sport, whatever it was. And then in the summer, basically the only thing we had for a long time in Alva was an AAU track program and also a baseball program. The times have changed and everybody's doing it and it's competition and kids make those choices, coach. But we're trying to make everything available to where they can do all three and go vocal up in Illinois, if they want to go up there.
We say it's a fundraiser, but we look at our estimated revenue and expenses and we've got net profit of zero.
Well, I think the net profit of zero is going to be because of the coaches' salaries coming in. Because that part of it will be pretty much...
They're going to drive their own salary essentially, is that what we're saying?
This money, everything that will be expenses, they will pay out of that and will do it just like our activity account, purchase orders and so forth. And then the money left over is there for the coaches' salaries for the summer. So if there's $1,000, then that head coach gets 50% of that and then he splits the rest of the money with his assistant coaches so that they can generate money for him. And so the district really is not paying for anything, it's coming all out of the activity fund and it's all driven by those students wanting to participate and so forth.
Will a new account be set up?
No, it'll be, just go into that activity account and we'll know how much comes in there and so forth, just like we do on each and every activity account.
There may be more than one team?
Yes.
And don't we also give an extra duty pay for that too for the summer?
We haven't yet, not for baseball. We have for football and basketball, so we'll have to look at that here probably at the May board meeting on the extra duty schedules. And I think we pay $1,000 to $2,000 for a summer program. So yes, we will have to do that and make that consistent.
If we had a student in our district that say was a, was a Legion-type player candidate and if they chose to not participate in this program but to do...
Legion?
Right.
They can.
Okay, they won't be, well, it won't be held against them?
If he's a candidate to play AAA, American Legion, and he can get better by playing there, and if he gets any kind of negative reaction during our baseball season, we need to look who's coaching because that's not good for that individual student.
Well, I just think that that could possibly be a conflict.
Could.
You're saying, you're saying like a kid would go to Woodward and play their Legion, on their Legion team.
Right. I mean, we've had that happen a pass, that's not an uncommon thing for some of our kids to make those teams, whether it be basketball or, and it's not held against them normally.
My personal belief is that coaches, if he gets, is going to, if he's going to get better playing AAA, American Legion, I'm going to let him do it because it's going to beat him at my team the next spring.
I just, I think it's just important that we look at this upfront, that this is not mandatory.
No, it isn't mandatory.
And that...
Now, if kids don't participate in baseball, don't participate in American Legion, the only thing it's going to do is actually put them back a year. It's not really going to hurt because they can come out in the spring and they can try out and those types of things. But if they don't participate, that actually puts them back about a year in their athletic program. So it's, again, it's that student's choice and what they do. But in order to get everybody, I guess, to be playing baseball this summer because of the no Renegade, no American Legion, those types of things, this is what the coaches have come up with to help our kids out, to have a summer program.
It will definitely benefit the masses.
Yes.
That's, that's for sure.
And I, and they're going to play kind of like a varsity, junior varsity program. Okay?
And I'm sure it's been addressed, but the school's going to provide transportation for the high school and the middle school kids to, to these away games?
Just like we do on summer basketball, 7-on-7, choir trips to Illinois, band trips to wherever, if, as long as we can afford it, we're going to do that without charging those organizations. The only thing that we ask is that the bus drivers volunteer if they're our coaches and we don't pay them. Okay? No problem. And the basketball gate distribution, you can see that, total 11,000. Basketball gets to keep two gates, the way we've always figured it, so that's the breakdown of who gets the money and so forth. And so, had a pretty good gate this year for basketball overall. Any other questions?
Motion for item three.
I move the adjournment consent agenda.
Did we do half?
Yes, just now. Basketball gate distribution.
Oh, okay.
Those referenced in items three B to three F.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ellis?
Aye.
Item four, vote to approve or not to approve purchase order encumbrances for the following funds listed A, B, C, D, and E. And the reason why I did it that way is because it's kind of jumbled on my screen, I can't figure out how to read it. So we're going to go with letters this time for FY 2016. It's not too bad, but it's...
Well, I came back here and worked at mine on Friday and mine was still, you know, like it was supposed to be and I look at it now and it's not, it's a writer.
You want mine?
No, I'm good. I think we're good if we, I mean, I've got the numbers, I just don't know where...
Here, stay put, I'm just giving you a hard copy of it.
Okay.
Well, I don't know what's happened to mine.
Would you like to borrow my paper copy?
Oh, there we go, okay. It's the first page.
Well, I know, but this will be encumbered, it's number seven one nine through seven forty-eight.
Okay.
For this total amount.
I've read lots of stuff this time, because I want to read it.
Really, there's not a whole lot of student conferences this month, I'll go over a couple of them.
Yeah.
Yep.
Purchase order seven twenty-nine, Mayor Phil Office's buy, $5,000, that's for an open purchase order for the remainder of the year for supplies. Jenny Hickman, contracted services, she is our contracted OT and that's for the remainder. Don't know if we'll use all that, but that's for an open, you know. Seven thirty-two, on the south side of the bus bar, we have the concrete pads going into the building, but the rest of it is dirt. And so we're redoing that to where the whole south side of the bus bar will be concrete so there won't be mud and dirt and everything else over there. And Benny Perks is doing that. Purchase order seven thirty-three, that's spring of all the schools for weeds and so forth for the spring. City of Alva, seven thirty-eight, again, open purchase order for the remainder of the school year. Seven forty-two, Snap-on, that is some software for, for Richard to be able to get on these new Suburbans and to analyze some problems and so forth. You know, we have to reset it every time a tire goes low and those types of things with all this new information and so this will help Richard out with that. And then seven forty-five, that's going to be expenses for the administrators going to the Coastal Convention this summer for the motel rooms and so forth. Any questions?
On purchase order seven thirty-eight, didn't we encumber those expenses at the beginning of the year?
We tried to, but...
So the, had the costs just increased?
A little bit. And then every time we get a, a big trash dump, it costs us $300, clean something out and that wasn't in part of it, which I think is redone for the city to charge.
It's cost them double.
Seemed like a big increase.
And the other general fund is just the substitutes. And again, the co-op fund, just contracted services, normal routine there. And Buckingham Services removes some badly needed trees over at Longfellow that were up against the building, caused a problem with roofs and so forth, so we've got that taken care of. Any questions on that?
Make a motion, will you approve items A through whatever, F, G, E?
Second.
Arthur?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Ellis?
Aye. Item five.
I was going to give everyone an update on the World Down Syndrome Day Walkathon that was presented at the fundraiser last month. It was really intended to be a day of awareness for our students and the fundraiser was kind of a side note and it just kind of exploded into something pretty special. Our Washington pre-K students hosted the walkathon where all proceeds went to the Down Syndrome Association. Our fourth grade students at Lincoln and seventh grade students at the middle school also came and participated in the walkathon. The theme was funky socks and students at Washington and Lincoln designed socks or decorated socks and we posted them up around our school. And we had an outpouring of support from the community, which was pretty impressive. We had some Northwestern football players, our fire department, police department all came out and supported the students and they ended up raising $3,821, $29 for the Down Syndrome Association. So that was totally not expected. It was a great awareness activity. The Down Syndrome Association of Central Oklahoma sent a representative to the walkathon and brought awareness materials for our students. And, you know, a special thank you to Shannon Boar because she's the one that organized it and it was a special event for, you know, our students who we have students who have Down Syndrome to bring that awareness up to their peers. So it really turned out to be a great event. Also, I was going to do a shameful slide for Washington's color run. We're going to do a one-mile fun run and a cut 5K color run. This is the first time we've done, we're going to do it, we're really hoping it'll be successful so that we can do it again year after year. And we're encouraging runners and walkers to join the fun. Registration forms are available on Washington's webpage. And it'll be $15 for a one-mile fun run, $20 for the 5K run, insurance are included. And registration fees will go up after April 9th for $5 per race. And all proceeds will go to our activity fund and our kindergarten teachers, we're working really hard to put this together and they have gone out and gotten some community supporters to help lower our costs and increase our profits. So we're looking forward to that, that is going to be on May 13th.
Okay, we had, back to whenever Dover High School had their fire, I talked to Mr. Parker, I'm a Dover High School graduate and yours, not, but not very many of us. But they had their, they had their fire, their high school burned down back to Christmas break, I talked to Mr. Parker, we sent a lot of, we sent several desks to them. We also raised money between Longfellow and Washington and sent them some money and they, they sent us a thank you note back and, and every little bit helped and, and very proud of our community because for one, we're, whenever I lived in Dover, Alva seemed like a long ways away. Now that I live in Alva, Dover does not necessarily seem as far away as what it did, but, but they, the state really kind of reached out to Dover and helped them out tremendously and I, as a graduate, am thankful for that. We had our soft seven competition at Longfellow and soft seven is basically that computer office, flash cards for multiplication, well, in fact, it has additions, subtraction, multiplication, and division, but they have competitions for addition and multiplication. And multiplication goes from third grade through eighth grade and so there are schools throughout the state that have third grade through eighth grade, well, we're at the bottom of that level and so it's harder to compete at that level. But in second grade, last year, Allison Sun won the state soft seven addition competition. This year, we're sending Kylie Adair to the state soft seven competition in Oklahoma City and that's, the kids really eat that up, you know, and, and last year they had in multiplication, they had different age groups, this year apparently they're not. And so multiplication, we're not sending anybody this year, which is sad, you know, because I know that my kids really enjoyed that last year and maybe they'll restart it next year. Also, we're doing our spellathon, we're in the midst of our spelling, spellathon, which is a hundred-word spelling test and, and the students go out and, and raise money. It's, it's done, we're, we've been able to do a lot of things at Longfellow with the money that we raised at spellathon. We purchased several pieces of playground equipment, a large fan for our gymnasium because it gets really hot in there in, in August. Several different software packages, soft seven. We've created a maker space down in our library that has different technology, STEM exercises to be honest with you. And so, and we've created a 30-minute time slot each week for our students to go down and do that and they love it. And so we're able to do a lot of things through our spellathon, our community has been awesome. You know, we get the same people who do our reading awards basically back our spellathon as far as that goes. Walmart's been great, Holder Drug has been incredible for us ever since we've started it and so it, it, both pizza places, it's really been a neat deal that the kids really enjoy. Last year, we set our record and, and raised over $17,000 and I took 54 pies in the face and, and, you know, the kids love it. It's been great for us and, and hopefully it will be again this year. Thank you.
That's a lot of pie.
It is. And people wonder why I'm so heavy.
We had a good month last month, we finished up our spring book fair, I want to thank Ms. Lyle for her hard work in completing that. One of the things that Ms. Lyle came up with this year is we, we always have really good community support purchasing books and we have been able to, with the scholastic dollars raised, every student at the end of the book fair, both fall into... dollars raised, every student at the end of the book fair, both fall into spring and is able to go in and pick out a ten dollar, ten dollar less book. So, we're really happy with that. That's something we hope to continue, and we appreciate moms and dads and grandparents that come in and buy those books, because we're able to give a little something back for them. So, I hope to continue to do that. We've obviously not finished the year up, but we're beginning to look at some of our practices with our common area expectations and some vocabulary that we use with students. We're kinda starting to review some of those plans for next year, looking at our learning earnings that I mentioned earlier. Our school-wide economy worked really great this year, but there are some things that we need to do a little bit different, and we need to adjust, and so we're beginning to meet and have some of those conversations before we leave for the summer. And then also reviewing some of our technology. We have lots of, we have lots of things, and we want to make sure that we're effective in what we're using, and maybe we need to focus a little bit on it. So, those are some of the conversations that we're beginning to have, and we want to get finished up and make sure that what we're doing when we come back in August is focused and laser-like in our instruction and in our practice.
Yeah, I had initially planned on having Mrs. Seaton here to talk about some technology in the classroom. Most of you know it's been a bit of a personal day for us at the middle school, so I told her we wouldn't worry about that. But we participated, like Allison said, we participated in the World Day for, World Down Syndrome Awareness Day. We decorated socks also, and our seventh grade participated because of Maddie, participated and supported Maddie. We finished up our book fair also. Mrs. White, over the past four years, has won three national awards through book fair, and her goal is to win one more this year. And we had a, she had a really good book fair this year, finished up, and hopefully, she thinks that she'll be in one of those top three again. We are starting on pre-enrollment, getting, trying to getting things ready for next year and getting some of our kids aware as to what they need to be thinking about for next year. We've had a couple of parent meetings and talked to them about some, some things for enrollment for next year, and then basically preparing for our OCT test coming up in a month.
That's kind of the same thing that we're doing at the high school. Last Tuesday, we actually gave every junior the ACT test that was, the state said they were gonna install for all juniors. So, we gave that, we were a test site for the state, and we gave all of our juniors the ACT test, and of course, we don't have results back yet, but, but we did do that at no cost, and they, we had, I think we gave every, we had about two kids or three kids that didn't show, and they were ones that we thought wouldn't show. They're not really interested in going to college and doing that, so really, it was not something that they were interested in taking. The end of instruction tests are coming up the next two weeks, and this may be possibly the last time that we have to give those end of instruction tests, there's legislation now that's going to do away with those, we hope, and nobody looks at those except graduation requirements. I mean, that's all it's for. Colleges don't look at it. It basically is jumping through some hoops for legislators that want to see that happen, and hopefully, that goes away. And like I said, it's, more than likely, it will go away. With lots of things going on. EG came back today from a good showing in Florida. They took a trip down there to do that. We've had success on the baseball diamond the last three weeks and done that, so we have a lot of kids doing a lot of different things. State speech is coming up this season. We have several twenty-eight, I believe, kids involved in that. So, there's a lot of kids going to a lot of different places right now, and it's, it always amazes me how we share kids, and we get kids where they need to be. You know, Coach talked about a while ago, about kids being involved in everything and doing that, and somehow, parents are really good and staff members are really good at getting those kids where they need to be to compete, what they need to compete in. The last thing I've got is, one thing that the Key Club did, a couple of weeks ago when the fires went through, the big wildfire outside of town, the Key Club had a real quick little meeting in the morning and said, what can we do? And they decided to have just a quick little fundraiser to see if they could raise some money to go and buy firefighters something. They wanted to get them water, but they called down and talked to them, and they had plenty of water at that time, so they went and bought a little bit of water, Gatorade, those kinds of things, but they've bought eye drops and whole chapstick, baby wipes, things that they could clean equipment with and clean, you know, hands and those kinds of things with real quickly. And so, they kind of passed the bucket, and that one morning, and then, you know, it's amazing, high school kids carry around a lot more money than I carry around, but then in two hours, they raised three hundred and twenty-three dollars, and then, Mrs. Simon's in charge of the Key Club, and she took about four kids with her, and they went shopping and purchased those things and dropped them off at the fire department. They were very appreciative of those, of those items. Key Club also takes care of senior citizens. They have, they're gonna do, later this month, they're going to do Senior Citizen Olympics, where they go to the rest home, play games with the senior citizens and do those kinds of things, and then, they also volunteer, I don't know if it's late in April or early in May, at the Little Olympics track meet, they volunteered that to help with those little guys going to do that, so.
April thirteenth.
Okay, so, they, they're doing that too. So, anyway, everybody's really busy, and it is, it's a wild time at the high school. Some days, we have a full load of people, and some days, it kind of looks like a ghost town, because the old kids are running around doing different things, so it's always a good place.
Okay. Okay, we have one resignation. Helen Bear is with extremely mixed emotions, and I'm submitting my resignation as company to the Volker Department. I've been so honored to be allowed to work in the department again for the past six years. I've appreciated all the kindness, consideration the district presented to me, especially this past year. Been such a privilege to work with Mrs. Cummings, the staff, and the students. Thank you for the opportunity. She's been a good one, very talented lady. Those two are gonna be hard to replace. Completed fundraisers, we do have, sheet there, Seniors Two Thousand and Fifteen generated basketball game raised nine hundred and ninety-one dollars. Lincoln Library has completed their book fair, raised a hundred and thirty dollars and eleven cents. Legislative updates, there's really not a whole lot to tell you, because, you know, it's still kind of going on. Tim and I did attend a finance meeting last Wednesday, and every indication there at that meeting and what you read from Mr. Hickman is that school's gonna start out with a five percent cut next year in all state monies, if you're on the form. They're gonna try to hold that true, but over in our meeting, they also said that December, we could get a midterm cut if the revenue falls even further than what it is right now. Shouldn't affect us, because we're gonna be off the form this year, okay? Now, the next thing would affect us, if the one penny sales tax passes and it goes for teacher salaries, that will affect the schools in a non-formular area, because those schools will have to pay for their teacher pay raises within their own budget. They will not get any state aid whatsoever. It won't come as a one item, line item, excuse me, a line item thing. It will be in the formula. That doesn't take place really until two thousand and eighteen. July first is when that money is appropriate. Honestly, the pay raises that we're talking about with that, we as a board, or you as a board, have done that with the city pay in September and also the Christmas bonus. Comes out almost the same type, within probably sixty thousand dollars. So, looking at somewhere around in the neighborhood of five hundred thousand dollars for those added pay raises in the future when it comes, if it comes. They think it'll pass. I'm not sure that it will. But Coastal's gonna back it, and they take it as true. And this is just kind of humorous thing that I want to bring to your attention. We have a House Bill, two thousand and six, fifteen, that prohibits families or individuals to accept any compensation for encouragement to attend a school for athletic purposes. Well, I sit on the Oklahoma Schools Appeal, and we hear these all the time. Never once is it mentioned about athletic. It's always academics that they're getting money for. So, I don't know if this bill is a joke or not, because it really doesn't pertain to what they say they're giving these kids when they go to these private schools for academics. And then, if they can't afford it, then they go back to the public school, and then, they appeal to be athletic-eligible at that particular time. I just thought that was kind of ironic, I'd share that with you. Okay. Communications. Of course, later in the meeting, I'm gonna ask you to retain three co-op teachers for the two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen, and then, we as a school district will reassign those positions. Basically, what we're doing, and we talked about last month or two months ago, we feel like that the direction that we needed to be taking is to improve our special ed program, and with adding a speech pathologist to our home staff and another special ed that we can do these things. So, we had to open those up, and the speech pathologist, Julie Rien, and the special ed teacher, Kelly Kellen, working for the co-op, basically applied for those positions. And they are part of the Alba faculty, because we are the LEA. So, that pretty much dissolves the co-op, and then, Sherri Flader, I will ask you to be hired as a counselor for our elementary. And again, we've been cheating a little bit on that to a certain extent, because we have had Allison as a administrator counselor on our accreditation report. So, we've been over our number limit in speech pass, so that will help us there, and then, it's going to actually add a extra special ed teacher, but that will allow us to go ahead and to maintain that zero to pre-K co-op students that we have to see. Plus, with those little numbers that they have there, we will be able to utilize our school district a little bit better, because we have done that this year to a certain degree. And I've talked to the other members of the co-op last week, and I feel like that either Woodward's going to pick up the LEA, or the small schools are gonna pick up as their own LEAs, and so I think the co-op will exist, but it will be in the south part of our state in Leedy, Visi, or Woodward area there. Also, we had accreditation last week. He's new. He was here from about twelve to about four-thirty. He dotted every I, crossed every T in that, and was very complimentary to our staff members, our administrators, our secretaries that worked on that. We do have some deficiencies, and we knew about it, because we do have some teachers that are not highly qualified in a certain area, and they are working on that, and that's the only deficit that we got, so we're fully accredited again this year, and very pleased with what we're gonna do. We're also gonna set up a professional development day with our accreditation officer next November, for him to come in, so that we can improve our accreditation report and make it simpler for him. They're real strict on our Spanish-speaking students and checking every one of them. Also, at the seventh grade, seventh grade, is that right, Ron?
Yes.
On those health certificates, they check every health certificate to see if they had what, Ron?
T-DAP.
T-DAP.
It's the DTAP booster that they have to get for them in the seventh grade.
So, had a pretty good deal there. And then, we need to get a count, and who's gonna try to go to that OS-SBA meeting in April? It's engaged, and that's kind of interesting, since Gage is going to be taken over by Fargo next year.
I thought it was gonna be at Fargo.
Do I have it wrong in my head?
Second paragraph. This meeting will begin with dinner at six-thirty at Fargo High School.
Yeah, Fargo, yeah. I got a back for the player. So, if you could let Becky know in a couple of days, so we can get that information to them, I'd appreciate it. And that's all I have at this point in time. Any questions?
Are we gonna be meeting here and going as a group?
We'll leave from here and go as a group. So, whoever wants to go, just call Becky, let her know. Turn that in.
Item seven A, discussion with possible board action, appointment of legislative liaison for Alba Public School for two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen fiscal year.
Is it Jane?
Jane is our liaison this year. I think she's been the last two years.
I think so.
Yeah, you were, and I was, I think. Do you wanna continue?
I can't. I don't, I don't wanna read the stuff. I don't know what else I do besides just read what goes. We get the emails, all of you get the emails, don't you?
Yep.
I mean, that's all I've done, so I can continue to read emails.
Come in.
I have a second for Jane. Second.
Harmon?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Aye.
Alice?
Aye.
Seven B, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve paying summer lawn care personnel as follows, head position twelve dollars an hour, assistant position eight dollars an hour, effective April fifth, two thousand and sixteen.
We're having problems trying to find some summer help, so we're having to make that range a little bit, and my recommendation is go to twelve dollars an hour for head summer maintenance, and leeway, if we have an assistant, may not work as many hours at eight dollars an hour, to be effective when we start talking to these people. I've had a couple of people come in interested, but last year's help is not gonna do it for the pay we paid them, and it was ten dollars an hour.
I would, I would think the assistant, assistant ought to get at least ten.
Larry, that gives us a little leeway that if it is a employee of the Alba Public Schools that may be on a nine-month contract, or I mean, a ten, eleven-month contract, that we wouldn't have to pay that time and a half, but because of the hours and everything, able to offset that. So, that gives us a little bit of a leeway to pay any employees that way, because we do have one that's interested in, and if we can help our employees, I'd like to help our employees. So, that's why there's that variance.
And they're willing to do it for eight dollars an hour?
To have that summer extra job and not, and that offset that time and a half.
We don't have anybody for this twelve-dollar-an-hour job?
Not yet. We've got, I've had three people come in today.
Have we bid it out?
I did bid it out with some people, and felt like it was about twenty-five hundred dollars more than what we've paid in the past, and actually got his bid down a little bit. I'm not sure if it's maybe not the best way to go, too. You know, I don't know if the extra's that much, because I know it'll be taken care of. We wouldn't have to worry about... I know it'll be taken care of. We wouldn't have to worry about somebody, you know, working, couldn't get to it and that type of thing, but yet I want to help my own employees if I can, if they need some extra money to be earning this summer, so.
The 25, that would be, they would use their own equipment as, I mean...
Not completely on that.
Okay.
Because they don't have mulchers and we need a mulcher on some of our football and athletic fields and that type of thing.
Because I know when I worked, I only worked for about $7 an hour. And I worked all day and half the night. And I always had to...
You did it by yourself and we've had to hire two people, Coach.
Yeah. You know, one day I did the high school, one day I did the junior high, one day did, well, actually two days did the high school because they had the front yard and then the...
Football field.
Football field and the baseball field, not softball field. So it just, it just takes a lot of time. And you can't...
According to the industry, at two miles an hour with a 54-inch mower, you can mow one acre an hour. And we approximately have about 20.3 acres on all of our school. So just to mow, if that's true, has to take 20 hours a week. And then you add the edging, which is probably twice the time put in because you're not going two miles an hour, you're not going 54.
I don't think they do that.
We try to at least once a summer, but we're going to do a better job.
Good.
Okay.
I'd say if you can't get someone to do that, then we will get bidding that out.
Okay.
So that we can ensure it's done.
Yeah.
Hold them accountable.
Sure. But this is a start if you would accept this.
I make a motion that we approve 7B as a start.
McDermott?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slager?
Yes.
Alice?
Aye. 7C, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the request from Rosemary Stout, the club sponsor for this group, to travel to San Antonio, May 23rd through 27th, 2016. The purpose of this trip is to see historical sites, tourist attractions, and experience Hispanic culture in San Antonio. This group is requesting the use of three school suburbans.
And again, you can see the itinerary there and this is a trip that the board has approved in the past and it's always been approved in the past as long as they can afford to pay themselves to go on that trip. So I would recommend that the board approve this if they have the money.
Still moved.
Second.
Slager?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Alice?
Aye. 7D, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve the request from a club sponsor Rosemary Stout, a $400 cash advance from the club activity account to be used for emergencies, meals, and door admission fees while on the San Antonio cultural trip, May 23rd through 27th, 2016.
And in the past, the board has approved this because there are some times when they get there that will not take a credit card, will not take a purchase order and those types of things and take cash only. So the board has approved this in the past also and I would make this certification.
Move to approve item 7D.
Second.
Martin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slager?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Alice?
Aye. 7E, discussion with possible board action, vote to enter or not to enter into win-win negotiations with the ALBA Education Association and the ALBA Board of Education for 2016-17 school year.
And again, this is a yearly thing that the board must hold on to go around negotiations with the ALBA Education Association. So this is the start of negotiations by approving this item.
I make a motion that we approve 7E.
Second.
McDermott?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slager?
Yes.
Alice?
Aye. 7F, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve rehiring their certified staff listed on attachment duty for the 2016-17 fiscal year.
And again, the principals have evaluated all of their staff. They have worked with their staff to get them to this point in time here. And their recommendation to the board is to hire their staff back for the 2016-2017 school year.
Make a motion we approve 7F.
Second.
Parker?
Yes.
Slager?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Alice?
Aye. 7G, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve rehiring and reassignment of the following certified employees for 2016-17 fiscal year. Listed 7G1, 7G2, 7G3.
And as I explained in my communications, this will dissolve our part in education of co-op and we will utilize these personnel in our school district and they have been part of our school district for a long time. So I would recommend that all three be rehired for the 2016-2017 and then we will appoint them at their appropriate places for their positions and their certification.
You want all three approved?
You can, yes sir.
I approve. I make a motion we approve 7G1, G2, and G3.
Second.
Parker?
Yes.
Slager?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Alice?
Aye. 7H, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve or not to approve a one-year temporary contract for Article Number One Certified Teacher for the 2016-2017 school year.
I'll let Mr. Arg go take over.
Well, I'm happy to recommend Carolyn Cole. She is the cream of the crop and we're excited to have her. Just to tell you a little bit about her, she really came across well in the interviews. I think she's going to be teachable and she's going to really care about our young people and I'm excited to have her a part of our school. So I would recommend that we hire Carolyn Cole.
How do you spell the last name?
Sue Ellie.
In what grade?
Be fourth grade.
Is this to finish out the school year?
No, this would be for next year.
For next year. It's a one-year temporary contract like all first-year teachers are.
Oh, it's under, sorry.
It's a, an increased class that Tim does not have at this point in time. And she, student teaching Burlington and she's been doing long-term Southern Longfellow for...
I was from January till spring break.
Till spring break. So I'm very fortunate to have her. Now, you can ask her any questions you want. She's ready, right? Did you get your speech ready, Carolyn?
Oh, yeah.
But she was highly recommended Burlington and also Steve, Tim, the interview. We're very fortunate to have her.
Make a motion that we accept Carolyn Cole, fourth-grade teacher for the 16-17 school year. Second.
Martin?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Slager?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Alice?
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now you can breathe.
I know. Well, I, I'm not breathing to kind of sign my name.
So that won't be a while, honey. We won't get contracts out for a while.
I'll be holding my...
We might need to go ahead and start interviewing somebody else.
She's going to die because she won't breathe.
She won't wait around by then.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
There was no new business. Item nine, signing of documents approved by earlier action.
Can you update?
I just now got an update. Said that, I don't know, she's stable but critical. It's a long, long road. They're slowly trying to wean her off some blood pressure meds. Still hour to hour, but she's getting stronger.
The Tuana's board meeting today, I'm sure that Ted Robinson, the director of the police service in Northwestern, is airlifted down here today. And officially, they said they don't think he's going to make it.
Really? They had actually called family. Last morning, right after lunch, they did a bedside surgery, removed some fluid from around her lungs. Blood pressure went up. She's on pretty high dose of blood pressure meds and antibiotics right now. They said her blood pressure is up and she did stabilize a second, so. Still don't know about, I don't know.
Day by day, huh?
Yeah.
Hour by hour.
Yeah.
Keep you guys informed.
That's it?
I know.
No.
That's it?
Yeah, I need to see. Well, hold on, I need to just sign one.
That's not it.
He has to sign one.
Mr. Ted, what was his symptoms, Lynn?
They just found him on the floor unconscious.
I don't understand. I didn't want to lose on it, so I had to review. Really, yeah.
He has been everything. I got cause of food poisoning, most of the consumption foods, the Little Olympics track meetings.
Mr. Chairman, did you have a...
Give that code deal.
Now I know why. Coach P, motion.
I'd make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
Parker?
Yes.
Uh, Slager?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Alice?
Aye.